I would like to open this public hearing if I might. At this time, I'm going to read a little bit of a document. We will be to the regular board meeting here shortly, so hang on, hang on to your hats there. This evening's public hearing is called 1028 hearing. Hearing this type is a legal requirement prior to a public school corporation moving forward to approve the issuance of bonds. This process relates to the potential financing of the proposed construction and equipping of two new elementary schools located at 2915 Charlestown Pike in Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130, site of the current Wilson Elementary, and 603 Market Street, Charlestown, Indiana, 47111, site of the current Jonathan Jennings Elementary School, respectively, and general improvements at all academic buildings of the school corporation, the project and the financing of the project. The school board encourages comments and questions related to these projects by the citizens of Greater Clark County Schools. If you desire comment, when I open the public hearing for comments, you should raise your hand, and when I recognize you come forward to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes for your presentation. You will be notified when you have a minute left to speak. For that, for the sake of time, if the prior speaker has made the same comment which you're going to make, it's efficient and okay to say, "I agree with Mrs. Smith or Mr. Smith", rather than repeating a commented whole. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Laura Hubberger, our CFO, for comments, and we will ask for a public comment here shortly.
Thank you, Mr. President. The same thing how we're going to conduct this public hearing is that we will turn over to the superintendent. He will describe to you how we arrived at this point, and they will be followed by a fantastic financial presentation by Stiefel that will explain to you the impact of the project on the district and where we financially stand. Mark, please.
All right, thank you, Laura. First, you know, I want to just speak to the process of what we've gone through to come to this, you know, time and conclusion of what we need to do moving forward with these facilities. It's been a two-year process. There's been, over the past 10 years, two different facility studies completed. One was done in 2014 by Covert Hawkins, and one was done last year by Lancer Beebe. So two different architects. Both came to the same conclusion is that we have some elementary schools that are in dire need of work. You know, and certainly, the two elementary schools in Charlestown, Jonathan Jennings and Pleasant Ridge are on that list, need extensive, and also Wilson Elementary and Thomas Jefferson Elementary. When you look at our elementary, uh, elementaries in the district, those four are some of our oldest and in the worst condition. You know, Thomas Jefferson Elementary is right at 70 years old, Jonathan Jennings Elementary is right at 60 years old, Wilson Elementary is right at 60 years old. And, you know, when you talk to architects in terms of the difference between renovating those buildings and building a new school, it just makes a lot more sense for us to head the direction of building a new school on both of those properties. We already own the property that we need at Jonathan Jennings, we already own the property at Wilson Elementary. When you compare new construction versus renovation cost, it's almost equal. We've had at least three different groups tell us that to renovate Wilson Elementary up to the standard it needs to be at and to renovate TJ Elementary up to the standard it needs to be at, it would cost anywhere from $25 to $30 million. And what happens is you end up, you end up renovating a building that's 60 and 70 years old, and you're only going to get 20, 20 years of life out of that old building versus building a new building that will get you another 50 to 60 years of life. And it's the same situation in Charlestown. You know, to renovate Pleasant Ridge, while Pleasant Ridge isn't as old as the other three, it wasn't built well, and there's extensive problems in that building. But to renovate Pleasant Ridge and JJ, once again, you're talking anywhere between $25 and $30 million to renovate those two buildings up to the standard they need to be at. You know, so for, for myself, the administration, the board, the task force that was put together over the summer that looked at the facility studies, we all came to the same conclusion is that we need to build a new elementary on the JJ property, build a new elementary on the Wilson property, that would then merge Pleasant Ridge and JJ into that new school and merge Wilson and TJ into that new school on the Wilson property, which also brings about some efficiencies that would be great for the district in terms of staffing, food service, transportation, maintenance, mechanical, you know, that helps your budget frankly. You know, and the neat thing about this, in terms of what we can do building these new schools, it's not going to cost the taxpayer one penny. We can do all this work and not raise the tax rate one cent. And you may ask, "Well, how can you do that? How can you ask for a bond of $68.9 million and not raise taxes on anyone?" Well, it's because of the growth that we have in our district. I mean, Stiefel, Matt Schumacher here is going to talk about that here in a minute. But we've had tremendous growth in this district. The assessed value growth, net assessed value growth in this district has gone up substantially. That allows us to do these projects and not raise the tax rate on anyone. And, and we're committed, right now, our tax rate is $1.10 for school taxes. That's the state average. And we're committed to keeping it at $1.10 while we do these projects and well into the future. The board's committed to that, I'm committed to that, Stiefel is helping us make sure that we, we hit that $1.10 mark each and every year because we do not want to negatively impact the property taxpayer in our district. You know, I live in the district, I pay property taxes, I don't want to pay any more than I have to, just like everybody else. But also, on the other side, I want to support kids, I want to support our staff, I want to support this, this community called Greater Clark. And frankly, it's time to address these buildings. I mean, we want to have the best learning environment that we can have for our kids. And right now, in those four buildings, we don't have that, and it's time to address this situation. That's what these hearings are about, you know, last night, tonight. We hope that the community supports us in moving forward, especially since we're not going to negatively impact the taxpayer at all. And we're going to do something fantastic, not only for our students and staff, but really for this community, which is a growing community that deserves, you know, nice schools and a great education. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Schumacher from Stiefel, who's going to talk about, you know, how do we finance these projects and not raise taxes on anyone? So, Matt, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Like Mark said, Matt Schumacher with Stiefel. I'm here tonight to talk about the financial information surrounding this proposed project. Before I get to the particulars, I want to spend a couple minutes to talk about assessed value, the property tax, and the levy. As Mark mentioned, Greater Clark Schools has established a tax rate goal, a total tax rate goal of $1.10. Laura has been the CFO for a few years, she's done two budgets, and I'm happy to report both of her budgets have come out to $1.10, both in 2021 and again in 2022. That may not sound that exciting, but what I can tell you is the majority of school corporations aren't able to get to the same tax rate each and every year. There are a lot of variables that go into determining your tax rate, so the ability to hit that tax rate consistently is not as easy as it seems, but through Laura's work and Mark's work, they've been able to consistently do that in the last couple of years. We will continue to do so in the near future. So a little bit of background, school corporations' total tax rate is just a summation of the tax rates for each tax supported fund, debt service, pension, and operations. The variables that impact the tax rate are the assessed value and the levy. Down in the bottom right, you can see the tax calculation there in the orange box. It's simply your property tax levy divided by your assessed value. The chart right above that shows how the assessed value and the levy interplay to come up with the tax rate. So walking through this real quickly, your assessed value, which is your tax base, if it doesn't change from year to year, and your levy, the amount of money that you ask for, doesn't change, then your tax rate is not going to change. Now, if your assessed value stays the same, but the levy, the amount of money that you're asking for increases, then your tax rate needs to increase as well to fund that higher levy. On the opposite side, if your assessed value doesn't change and your levy decreases, then your tax rate decreases as well because you're not asking, asking for the same amount of revenue. Greater Clark has seen significant AV increases over the last several years. Their five-year average is right at 7%. Their three-year average is a little over 8%, and they're growing almost 12% from 2021 to 2022. Why this is so important is there in the middle box, if your assessed value is increasing, then your levy can increase proportionally with it without seeing a tax rate increase. So while Greater Clark's levy has been increasing from year to year, it's been proportional to what the assessed value does, hence hitting that tax rate of $1.10. Greater Clark also has decided that they are going to sell bonds late in the year. Typically, you get your assessed value somewhere in August, September, October. So Greater Clark just waits to sell their bond issues until late in the year when they have that assessed value. So once we know the assessed value and what that levy has done, we can structure the bond repayment to hit that exact levy for that following year, get to that $1.10 tax rate consistency. So I want to spend a minute here talking about the legal thresholds for projects. Thomas Pearson, Bond Counsel, is here. He can answer any questions you all may have, or get into greater specifics than I have, but I do want to touch on it because it is important. There are three different thresholds, the first being $5,575. For a project that is less than $5,575, there is no formal taxpayer opposition. So if the board votes yes to move forward with the project, the project can move forward. In the left yellow box, the debt is within the tax cap. I think most of you are probably familiar with tax caps, but for these type of projects, any homeowner that's already at their tax cap or above their tax cap is not going to pay anymore because they're already capped out. I'm going to illustrate that in a couple of slides. The next threshold is for projects that are greater than 5.5 million but less than 16.7 million, and here the petition or monstrance process applies. When the school adopts the resolution, there's a 30-day period where taxpayers can go out and get signatures opposing the project. If they get enough signatures opposing the project, the petition race begins. You have two flipboards here, a yes clipboard and a no clipboard. Each side goes out and gets as many signatures as they can, whoever gets the most signatures wins. So if you get 1,000 yes signatures and 900 no signatures, the project can go on. Flip side, if you get 1,000 no signatures and 900 yes signatures, that project is defeated. As with the smaller project limit, this debt is also within the tax caps. The last threshold for a project of this size, any project over 16.7 million, that project is subject to referendum. It doesn't mean the referendum has to occur, it means the process is subject to the referendum. So two different boxes here. Same process, you adopt the resolution, a 30-day waiting period. If 500 signatures are gathered, then instead of it being subject to petition race, it is put on the ballot and it goes to the referendum. If no petition is received, then the school corporation can go ahead and move forward with that project, however, the debt is still inside the tax caps. If this goes to referendum and the school wins, it is now outside the tax caps, and the school is going to collect dollar for dollar on that levy. Again, I'm going to illustrate that here in a little bit. A lot of schools that are impacted by tax caps as significantly as Greater Clark, they actually trigger the referendum themselves. They will go out, get the required signatures, put it on the ballot themselves. They do that because it's better for them financially, though they will get each dollar, dollar for dollar for the levy associated with these bonds. If it's not passed via referendum, all of that is still within the tax caps, they won't collect dollar for dollar. As Mark already spoke, he doesn't want to, his team does not want to impact the taxpayers in any way. They have the ability to do this debt within that $1.10, and they do not want it to go to referendum. They're not triggering the referendum because it will cause taxes to go up. Thomas, before I move on, anything you wanted to mention that I missed?
Right. The, the important thing to note here is that if there is no referendum, then the maximum cap rate that people would pay stays the same. So an example is if your taxes are capped at $1,000 before we do this project, the same cap will apply for some of your assessed valuation. If a group from the outside requests having a referendum, and then the school goes forward and wins that referendum, taxpayers will see an increase of paying $1,000 from the cap, but then also paying their share of debt service on these bonds. So odd as it sounds, not having a referendum creates a lower tax impact for the individual taxpayer. It's, it's a bizarre sort of concept, but not having a referendum means at the end of the day, a lower set of taxes on the taxpayers because of the tax caps.
And we're going to illustrate that here over the next couple of pages. Hopefully, some of these numbers will help this sink in a little bit further. So again, top bullet, and we've already hit this multiple times, the bonds passed via referendum are not subject to tax caps, meaning that they collect dollar for dollar of that levy associated with the bond regardless of tax caps. In 2021, this is just an example, homes valued at $100,000 and above that were located in the city of Jeffersonville were all at their caps, meaning they were not paying their full portion of the tax liability, they were capped out. If the school pursued and won a referendum, those homesteads would all see a tax increase because now the caps don't matter, they have to pay dollar for dollar associated with these bonds. By not triggering a referendum, the school is ensuring that all of those taxpayers will not incur a tax increase. No one will see a tax increase if this does not go to referendum. Down at the bottom, we've shown some numbers here. So gross assessed value, they're highlighted in the blue, that's another term for the market value of your house, but you don't pay taxes on the market value of your house. You actually have some deductions there, and you pay based off the net assessed value. So you can see there, and the numbers are a little bit small, but for a $175,000 home, valued at $175,000, you get to take out the homestead, the supplemental, and the mortgage deduction. After taking those out, your net assessed value is $81,500. That's the number that you pay taxes on. You apply the tax rate to your net assessed value, not your gross assessed value. There in the orange box, this assumes bonds are issued without a referendum. There you can see the difference, it's going to be zero dollars to every single taxpayer. Down at the bottom in the green, this assumes that someone triggers a referendum and the school wins. So this assumes the bonds are issued via referendum. Based on that, that $175,000 home is actually going to pay another $276, even though the tax rate didn't change. Again, they, if they're already capped out, they still have to pay dollar for dollar on a referendum. A $350,000 home, they're going to pay about $661 more annually, or about $55 more a month if it gets passed via referendum. Digging into these numbers, if you'll bear with me a little bit further, we break this down even a little bit further just to show you the math behind it. So again, a $175,000 home, you take out the homestead, supplemental, and mortgage, you're left with a net assessed value of $81,500. Now, the circuit breaker or the tax cap for homesteads is 1% of their gross assessed value. So that $175,000 home can pay no more than $1,750. Now, the city of Jeffersonville in 2021 had a tax rate of $3.25, 3.2466. If there were, if tax caps were not around, that tax liability would be $2,646. But because of the 1% cap, that homeowner still cannot pay more than $1,750. The difference between those two is $896. That's $896 that that taxpayer saved, but that's $896 if the taxing units did not collect. For a $350,000 home, you can see that difference is now up to $2,839. Again, that loss is split between all of the taxing units, not just the school. If we look at what would happen if a referendum did occur and passed, we've shown what the taxes would look like in year 2023. So that same $175,000 home, circuit breaker max is still $1,750, but now they have to pay the full tax rate associated with these bonds if it gets passed via referendum. That's estimated at just a shade under .34. So that $175,000 home would have to pay additional $276 above the cap. So now their new cap is simply the 1750 plus the 276, it's now $2,026. They should have paid $2,646 without the tax caps, but after the referendum is passed, they're actually going to pay $2,026 for a difference of $276. You can see the math for the 250, 350, and 450,000 home, that tax impact is going to be higher, the higher value of your home. So thank you for bearing with me. I did want to walk through those numbers a little bit, just to prove why the school does not want to trigger the referendum, not have a referendum on this project because it will impact homeowners. So moving on to the actual bonds, we're looking at the current debt service here from 2021 to 2022. You can see the payments increased pretty significantly, but that's because the assessed value is going up. You'll remember I said, as your assessed value goes up, your levy can go up. So we're not solving for debt payments here, we're solving for a total tax rate. And you can see the tax rate line stayed perfectly at $1.10 from 2001 to 2022. For schools looking at major projects such as Greater Clark, this is the exact picture that we want to see. From 2022 to 2023, there is a large drop in outstanding bond payments, which means that you can have new payments, a new levy be added on in 2023 without impacting the tax rate for taxpayers. If we go to the next slide, this is just a projection of what the, of what the bonds may look like if they move forward. We've added on top of the blue, the red bar graph there depicting the payments from the 2022 bonds. You'll notice there's not a spike from 2022 to 2023. We're only assuming a 4% growth rate in assessed value at this point, kind of a worst-case scenario based on the recent trends. Again, we're going to wait to see what the assessed value does before any bonds are sold if this passes, so if this, if the AV ends up growing 10%, 12%, 3%, 4%, we'll know exactly what the payment needs to be at this time. All of this is just merely projections. Even with these bonds coming on, you can see the tax rate is basically 2023, but then it can immediately drop in 2024, retaining capacity for any future projects that Greater Clark might need to do, all while being tax neutral. I know we've said this a million times, but the story is, at the end of the day, Mark and his team want to accomplish all of these goals based on their financial needs without impacting taxpayers. Some good fun stuff, the legal parameters of the proposed projects. We've broken this out by each elementary school, and then we'll do it in aggregate. In the resolution, you will see these exact numbers. Par amount of bonds for elementary number one, 32 million, that is a not-to-exceed number. To borrow anything below that, you cannot borrow above that. Estimated cost of issuance, these are upfront professional costs, this number is very conservative, it's very high, it will be less than this, but we're painting kind of a worst-case scenario here. Estimated cost of issuance, 500,000, leading 31,500,000 for the estimated hard and soft project costs. Estimated interest rate is at 4%. If you were to sell this today, you're probably in the 225 to 250, but again, we're trying to paint the worst-case scenario here. Estimated interest expense on the 32 million, about 12.8 million. Maximum lease payment, that's the maximum payment you can have in any one year, 5,575. Estimated maximum tax rate impact is 15.74 cents. We just spoke about how this was going to be tax rate neutral, the rate is not going to increase, but this just reflects the statutory formula. It simply takes the maximum lease payment and divides it by your assessed value. It does not take into account the chart that I just showed you where some of your payments are falling off. When we look at your net impact, that looks at your payments falling off, new bonds coming on, that impact is going to be zero. Elementary number two, same exact numbers. I won't go through these again, but same exact numbers as elementary one. The project in totality that is going before the board today, not to exceed par amount of 68.9 million, this includes the two elementary projects and general improvements throughout the school corporation. Estimated cost of issuance, 1.1 million, leading 67.8 million for hard and soft project costs. Estimated interest rate is still at 4%. 27 and a half million for the estimated interest rate expense, again, that is very inflated because of the interest rate that we're using. Maximum lease payment is 12 million, dividing that by your assessed value, you get a tax impact of .33.9 cents, but again, a debt impact of zero as you're paying off some of your other bonds. I appreciate the time. If you have any questions, I don't know if you guys want to ask any questions at this point, you're going to have to answer any of the public's questions while we open it up.
We'll open it up if you'd like. No, thank you, Matt. I mean, it's a very clear picture of why we don't want to do a referendum, because we don't want to negatively impact any taxpayer in our district. You know, we can do this work without raising the tax rate from, from $1.10, and his presentation, you know, portrayed that pretty clearly.
All right. At this point, you little pirates over there are here for a board salute, aren't you? Is that right? Well, there's a quiz, a math quiz. If your gross assessed value is $1.75 million, and your homestead deduction is $45,000, your supplemental deduction, 45.5, and your mortgage deduction is $3,000, what would your net assessed value be? You can break that to a little, a little problem.
We want that answer in written form.
Yeah, you're going to write that out, and show your word on how you got your answer.
You guys have PTSD for that, don't you?
I promise you we're hurrying, but thank you, you've been really good, so I appreciate that. I'm sorry, folks, I could, I had to. At this time, I'm going to open it up for the public hearing for comments. I'll ask those of you interested to raise your hand, don't forget to state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to talk, and they'll let you know when there's about a minute to go. So at this point, I'm going to open that up. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Would you please move on up to the podium. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Laura Basham. I live at 8521 Old State Road 3 in Otisco, it's 47163. My daughter Charlotte is a fourth grader at Jonathan Jennings. My family came to Charlestown about three years ago, my husband retired from active-duty military. When we were deciding on where to live, the school system was a top priority. Charlotte has multiple disabilities. She was born legally blind and has severe ADHD. Because of her situation, we knew she would need to be in a special education classroom with specialists for her disabilities. From the beginning, the teachers and staff at Pleasant Ridge and Jonathan Jennings have been nothing but amazing. Charlotte's current teacher, Mrs. Liz Hardy, works incredibly hard to come up with creative and fun ways to help Charlotte and her other classmates learn and grow. The staff look out of their way to help accommodate Charlotte's needs. They do everything they can to include her and make her feel like she's part of the student body. Something as simple as going on a field trip or participating in a cheer clinic meant to grow to her. Without her, the teachers and the staff would not, without this, it would not have been possible. While the teachers and staff do everything they can for their students, the need to have up-to-date and modern abilities is a great one, especially for the special needs children who have different health and mobility concerns. Charlestown is growing at an incredible speed, meaning more children with different needs will be coming to the area. Stability and consistency is also extremely important, and something these two new buildings could provide for these children and something these two new buildings could provide for these children. As a mother with multiple children, knowing that all of my kids would be together would be incredibly reassuring and less stressful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Basham. Very much. Anyone else like to make a public comment? Okay. Alright, if no one else desires to make a public comment. Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
My name is Dawn Allen. I live at 610 Aaron Garage here in Jerseyville. And I actually got to serve on the Facility Study Task Force. I was one of about 60, 65 people that did that. A very diverse group of folks. And we were charged with only being open, honest, and sincere in the way we dealt with each other and the way we dealt with the business. I've had 42 years of banking, and that's refreshing, isn't it? We prioritized through a bunch of processes, and we talked back and forth. We saw these facility studies and all the things that are wrong with the schools. We looked at every school in the district, middle school, high schools, all the elementary schools. And you could see, they had it all in red, yellow, white, to see what the worst needs were, and these things just rose to the surface. And economically, I've always been interested in that. Economically, it makes sense to spend, if you're going to spend the money, spend it on something new rather than spending it on something that's going to be done again 20 years from now. That does not make good economic sense. The other thing that was mentioned, that I could mention this quickly, is that we are looked at as folks are coming to this community. The number one priority, I heard you say, is you look at the schools. And we need to have a great image of our schools out there. You drive by some of our schools right now, great to say we don't have that. And other school systems do, and people have the choice of going to other school systems. And I hate that. I went to, I went to Jeff, my kids all went to Greater Clark. I encourage everyone to be in favor of this, and I know I am after going through the process. Because, you know, I was open-minded about it, but they convinced me.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your help, work on the committee as well. I know that took us a lot of time. Any other comments?
Well, I was going to mention one thing, just to build off sort of what Mr. Allen said, you know. One of the things I did in Perfections Group is here, they did an assessment on all of our abilities and looked at certain things, you know, that maybe needed to be addressed. And this is on top of what Lancer BB did with the facility study. And so I went back and looked at what they gave us in terms of what needed to be done at the four different elementaries that we're talking about. And I looked at three areas that they priced out in terms of what needed to be corrected at those four schools, JJ, TJ, Pleasant Ridge, and Wilson. And I looked at HVAC roofing and the building envelope, and what it was going to cost just to take care of those three items at those four schools. And the total cost that they estimated just to take care of those three items, HVAC roofing and building envelope, was $25 million on those four elementaries. And that's not even getting into the electrical, the plumbing, the tuck pointing brick, you know, you know, parking lot, all the roof, you know, the other major items. So, you know, once again, it's another example of what Mr. Allen just said in terms of, you know, building new is what makes sense and is what is, to me, the responsible thing to do with taxpayer doctrine. So, just wanted to.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Rhonda Huesteller. I live at 6733 Anthem Drive in Charlestown. And I just want to say that I also circle the committee with Mr. Allen. And this has been a very open and transparent situation that we have here. And I want to say that I appreciate everything that Greater Clark has said to make this an open and transparent building project. I think it's refreshing to our school district, and I think it's something that our school district needed. And I just want to say, I've been with the school district for 30, over 35 years now. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're looking at doing this. I've been through the good and bad in Charlestown. I've taught at three schools in Charlestown. It's a much needed thing in Charlestown, and I believe the people in Wilson and Tom Schepson would agree with that. From the studies that we look at, I will tell you, nothing has changed. Everything, I've been through this presentation, Greater Clark County Council, I was here last night. I was at the presentations on the task force. The presentations have to change people. It's the same presentation over and over, and that's very refreshing to us. I like the fact that things are not changing. What we're saying, what they're saying, everything that's said here, everything that's been on the report is true. And so, I just want to say I'm in total support of the new buildings for both schools and for both communities. And that I just want to tell Mr. Buckwalter that I need some of those girls, and you can give us those numbers on paper, and we will figure it out.
I thought that was you, but I couldn't tell it from the mask, so I wanted to call you by name, but I just didn't. Anyone else would like to make a comment? If no other comments are in front of us, I would now declare the public meeting hearing has ended. Okay, now I guess we don't have to proceed for a minute. At this point, I would like to call the Greater Clark County School Board of Trustees, December 14, 2021, school board meeting to order. Ms. Markowski, if you could note that all board members are here except Brian Jones. At this point, would you all stand and say the pledge of allegiance? Now, this is very, very long away in time for many of you. The board salutes.
Good evening. My name is Karen Wesley. I'm the Director of Elementary Education. It's my honor to be able to honor some of our elementary students this evening. JJ Blue was eight-two on the season, losing only to Utica and Washington. In the tournament, they defeated Utica Franklin Square and then Riverside to win the championship. It was a great season all around from the intermurals that gave so many girls a chance to be a part of the program, and then throughout the season and on the tournament championship. Our champions are Kirsten Thompson.
Come on in.
Leila Hammond. Harper Gray. Aubrey Riddhner. Sloan D. Art. Maddie Jenkins. Macy Crooks. Taylor Abby. Laney Adams. Peyton Groby. And I don't know if our managers are here, Emma Twigg and Kendra Atkins, but they were very important this season as well. Coach Ashley York is here. And Dr. Schreman, do you want to come up for the picture?
I just wanted to say, coincidentally, any team that won would have been here tonight. But I hope that our J.J. girls get a deeper understanding of how hard adults fight really behind the scenes. That was a good little lesson tonight, wasn't it? We're so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Karen, thank you for bringing that up. Keep working at it. Hopefully we'll see you. Keep playing here next year. See you at the Charlestown High School.
I know you want to hang around, but you don't have to.
They all want to be board members someday.
That's going wrong. Alrighty, the next item would be the approval of the agenda as presented. Board, I move that we approve the agenda as presented. Can I get a second?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any comments? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand. Thank you very much. The next item will be the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. I would move that we would approve those, but do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick, any comments regarding those? Questions, concerns? All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stand. Okay, next would be, no comments on the public agenda. So next would be Gulf Strategies' Major Fund Monitoring Report. Board, you bring it. Glad to see you again.
Yes. Yeah, a lot of finance tonight, so those kids could have stayed, and we really could have kept going on a map.
Then we frighten those kids.
Yeah, we sure wouldn't have. So tonight, what we're usually doing in charge of the patent and also we compete together in the order of the administration is not just to make sure that we get the $1.10 rate coincidentally and do receive a 17.2, which is the official budget, not going over that in January for those finances on the $1.10. So, the LGM would say that we're perky per $1.10 tax rate. Congratulations on that. The second thing is, we're going to go through our major funds report. We're also charged with increasing our cash balance to reach a minimum level of acceptance that is required by the state. So, what we've done here is we're supplying to you two months' worth of finances based on the timing of our board meetings. So, in the middle of the year, that's the happens, so we were able to get these two to you. So, briefly through October 31st, we're going to on the Major Funds Report, so that's the capacity bond activity. The first one should be the Major Funds Management Report. Now, you can leave that up there, that's no better. Because what I'm going to tell you about October is, you can see where at the top your October spending balances were. So, if you look at your education fund, you're going to see that that balance is increasing significantly. Remember, during the season, you approve resolutions to transfer $9.5 million dollars out of there into operations, which is less than the 15% threshold, or about 10%. The other thing is that we've had a TAW, our last TAW that we will be borrowing in this district until a tax anticipation warrant is truly needed. Meaning, if there's a delay, the taxes being distributed to any taxing unit, that's what we will take, are taken in the tax anticipation warrant. Most recently, the normal time would have been is when the governor declared that taxes didn't have to be paid at the traditional time, so we may not have to receive those funds. That's when we would have looked at that and processed. The other is your operations fund, which seems lower as we go along here between, you know, $4 million down to the $1 million, or $3 million. I'm sorry, the $3.5 million again has not received the $9.5 million transfer plan for education yet. Plus, we have, this does not reflect your property taxes, which are coming in of December, June, December. And this has a large TAW initiative to pay back, which would be also the last one in the district report. So those are the two things I wanted to point out on this. Are there any questions on that? The other is two months' worth of the Treasuries Report, which shows all funds that we monitor in the high district. We have our grants that come in that off of our office. We monitor through that, so majority appears when you see this red. The red means that those generally are reimbursable expenses. And I'd probably say that that's where we stand now. Before, if you call earlier on in the year, you know, the past year and a half, you've had to recover out of a negative situation, some of your funds. So, I'm looking at the top there, but I'm not sure if we have November up there. But just kind of indicated, I always take a look at the hardware for food service stuff, which is $800. And at the end of October, you ended with $1.13 million. But in November, it was $1.12 million. What that means is that when we receive our revenues in and the timing of our expenses, when we get our invoices in for food purchases, that's why that had gone down. We would think it would appear up all the time, but it's the processing timeframe when those things are processed. So, we did receive some escher, escher buy money, but some other relief money in our food service fund, so that did help them quite a bit. But rest assured that this team, a majority of that, they are really making a lot of movement in this one. Remember, when we first talked about, people gained about $600,000 in a month. So that puts a lot of athletes, a lot of pressure on them, and that was a lot of work. Your manly started off the bat, and then she has handled reins well, and they got a phenomenal job. So, we need frequently on this issue, so we want to make sure they continue to maintain that bubble. Are there any questions on any of the funds there? There you can see in bond number seven two, here's your bond fund, the Geo Bond. Right, so it's processing through you all the time. Those are the things that we're taking care of, that are the extreme emergencies that are happening behind the scenes of the walls of these schools. That was a $4 million issuance for a lot of work that's being done inside the district, which we're saving 30% of our, most of that work is done in-house. We have a lot of plumbing issues, so that line is reported to be right here all the time. That's why it's not a bond activity. It's all incentive for a general obligation. I wonder if anyone has any questions on those on that bond report. And the bond activity report. We'll do this monthly, but you will see there won't be a lot of activity because these are bonds that are ones that had been issued, and then as soon as we issue a new one, so you'll see that in October, at the bond, you'll see the 21 bond having a zero balance all the way across. But in November, we sold those bonds November 30th, and you'll see those funds come in on the November report. We'll do this monthly, but a lot of activity because this is work being done, so we have to allow the work to be done at a certain level. We only pay a certain percentage on those, that work. And then we have there a text line that comes in and says, so this will be a slow process where you may not see changes in these dollars come up. Sometimes it takes 90 days to process, and allow the work to. Our older bonds, we do have things that we are, we've gone over the plan of purchasing, I refills them in considerations. Those can change depending on what happens at that school. We had to take a look at all the way to repair at Franklin Square. So, you know, and we added some cameras in Franklin Square. So we have that opportunity to do those things. And we can regroup and replant, or if students need something, such as desks or things like that, we will consider that through these bond purchases. When people request these items, we take a look at what the need is and where the best efforts to charge the district for. So, if we qualify for the bond, we hit the bond. Otherwise, it comes out of your operation or education. So, having that been said, the end of October, 2016 bond has a projected income balance of $34,000, $534,000. But that is where we're going to buy those digits. That is where we're going to buy those diggers. It's taking, you know, time to get the specs for that and for those things to come in. So that'll take some time. When we finally decide on exactly what we need, that will take time to get those delivered and we pay, which we have deliveries. Twenty seventeen bond has one hundred seventy-three thousand three seventy-three. The twenty eighteen bond, which is at Franklin Square, seven hundred twenty-five thousand six six seven. We were able to just grab us down there that they didn't think they could do before. So we're adding. The twenty nineteen bond, projected balance is going to be zero because we're still in that process. We're still in transportation division. You know, that going will continue, and so we have a finer draw on that. And then we find October, we will look and see where they thought they needed additional needs in. We have considered some storage options such as cabinetry at transportation if we think that we will have funds over. They have fantastic desks. They thought maybe they need a little more private cabins because they're carrying a lot of paper there. So we're constantly talking about their needs. And twenty twenty, still even a projected zero balance at the end of the project because that is your Utica, and Jeff I, Jeff Johnson I, that's the classroom edition in the locker rooms. So that project is completely, so we're projecting it to the end. So then in November... You'll see how maybe you not change much, you're in a long stack. So twenty sixteen is the same. Twenty seventeen is one seventy-two. And I write out some of the things that we're spending. Twenty eighteen is sixty-two. Twenty nineteen is four hundred thirty-two thousand. Right, so now I'm able to start projecting it into the end of the term of where we're at. We still have another pay gap that's coming out of there, but we won't be too, too far from that hopeful, so we can get some additional needs there. Our propane tank down there should be delivered any day now. Twenty twenty series projected zero. The one that you want to look at is the twenty twenty-one. You've seen that she received the thirty-six million oh twenty-eight. That includes proceeds from the bond sale. So that will take care of all of the projects, and that includes your classroom additions at the various schools. So we have, you know, work that we're going to be doing. Tonight, there'll be presented a resolution for the twenty-two bond, which you will not stand there for a long time, because we will do that. If you remember what Matt said, is that we tend to settle towards the end of the year, so that we can know where our assessed value is to hit that target of the dollar ten. If there's any questions? Sure.
Franklin Square, all your considerations. It says roof and stuff?
Roofing concepts, yes. There are some portions of that that they want to take a look at and maybe do some minor repairs and changes on. Because, yeah, you know, so we're waiting. They do some resealing, so I'll have to, you know, that's just something that can come in. Let me get my sheet here.
Well, I didn't understand a lot of it. I'm just saying, I mean, we just did all that. I didn't know why we were reading something.
Hold on here, I'll get that out. Right, so those are future considerations as well, because there was some discussion of solar going on top. So they have to evaluate that roof for that. And if there's, and I always leave roof for, if there's any lease that should be in warranty, all of that, I always just kind of keep that too in place. But more for our solar. So there would have to be like a repair to handle that for them to put that on and change that. So it's like that type of repair too. We were, we had, I told you about the elevators, so we had some minor repairs on that. Did not, that's not under warranty or something. That was like seven dollars. I'm sorry, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know it's quite an overwhelming thing occasionally for you. But we're riveted, just like last time. So thank you, Laura. The next item would be the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would be happy to accept the consent agenda that's submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. I appreciate that. I'll board my second. So thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any comments or questions or concerns? Nope. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Thank you. A great long gift to buildings, and we, you know, who this is fair to charity. Would you do that for us?
Absolutely. Charleston High School had a donation during the year valued at eight thousand five hundred dollars. We have had a huge month, excuse me, anonymous donations. Books and toys, we have therapy, money for therapy dogs. And fund company, R and C, Northland Healthcare Foundation, several, and some individual donors as well, for a total this month of twenty-three thousand two hundred seventy dollars. I really love to give this to buildings. Have a second?
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Alright, the next item we have, one of our action items, is a ten-twenty-eight resolution. And you miss you bringer? Good to see you.
Good to see you. I've been seeing you for a while here.
How long? Where are you?
I mean, I'll be sitting down here for a minute, but I'll be back up here. So you, board has successfully conducted the required meetings for the next project that's part of the project plan, which is going to follow the two new elementary projects for the next bond issuance. So your next step now is to approve three resolutions. First one being a ten-twenty-eight resolution, which sets the S R contraction costs. Resolution number two is preliminary determination resolution, which sets forth the maximum principal of bonds, and the annual revs will be paid up. And resolution number three, reimbursement resolutions, explains that the school corporation intends to finance the project with tax exempt bonds, resolution is required by federal tax code. So if you ever have to pay for maintenance or anything, I have to agree, I, this also gives the authorization to be reimbursed. So it's my pleasure and my shared information that the board of trustees approve the three resolutions set forth before you this evening.
Or do I have a motion to approve these three ten-twenty-eight bond resolutions?
Mr. President, I approve we approve the ten-twenty-eight resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Alright, the next would be the resolution to close Bridge Point Elementary School.
Right, board. Back earlier this year on January fourteenth, our local representative cost reduction plan to the board, which included closing of Bridge Point Elementary. And board subsequently approved that cost reduction plan later in January. Since that time, we've used Bridge Point as a building to store.
If you're interested in working, like, we're trying...
Greater Clark would like to sell this property now, but it first must comply with Indiana Code. Indiana statute first requires that we comply with certain requirements before we can list this property for sale. We're asking that the board's school trustees allow us to notify the Department of Education and the Attorney General, as we're now required to do so, of the building closures, so we can then list that building for sale.
Alright. Or do I have a motion for the resolution to close Bridge Point Elementary School?
Mr. President, I approve we approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any questions or comments?
I think, no, I wanted to say something. I think that, you know, it's difficult to do this, but we, I guess we thought that maybe we would use that building for storage for the system. You know, we had, and actually that was going on to a certain degree. And then we had vandalism and a break-in, and, you know, I guess we looked at what, why are we keeping this if we're going to have to deal with those situations as well in a vacant building?
Anyone else? Alright, all those in favor of the resolution to close Bridge Point Elementary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Alright, next would be the appropriation of the teacher appreciation grant. Ms. Galbaker?
Alright, board, each year about this time, we receive funding from the state of Indiana for the teacher appreciation grant. We're requesting permission to appropriate and expend three hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is a decrease of eight thousand eight fifty-three from last year. That decrease is due to a reduction in ADM. The teacher appreciation grant funding is based on ADM. We receive these funds from the state to be distributed to our teachers who are highly effective and effective, based on their evaluations. This year, we have three hundred and sixty-nine highly effective teachers, who each will receive five hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. And two hundred and twenty-nine effective teachers, who each will receive four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Approval is needed to appropriate this money. Our board policy also previously approved each year, preferences our protocol for this allocation. This teacher appreciation grant information has been shared with Mark Felix, our G C president, and these performance award funds, if approved by the board tonight, will be on our teacher paychecks this pay, December seventeenth, alright?
I'm sorry. I'll ask a question here, say. Board, are you finished with this gentleman?
I am, yes.
Alright. Or do I have a motion for the appropriation of the teacher appreciation grant?
Mr. President, I believe that we approve the teacher appreciation grant.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Do I have a second, please? Second. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Galbaker? How many, we had three sixty-nine highly effective, and how many effective teachers were approved?
Two hundred and twenty-nine effective.
Okay, perfect. Paul? Okie doke. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the appropriation of the teacher appreciation grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okie doke. Next would be the energy reduced energy rate agreement. I guess that would be you, Ms. Galbaker.
I believe we...
Oh, no, 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 you're right, you're right.
Yeah, I got down there.
Permission to advertise substitute staffing services, please. Thank you.
For the current substitute staffing contract, which provides substitute for, substitute staffing for our teachers and professionals, is with E S S. And that was a two-year contract that began on July first of two thousand eighteen with the option of yearly renewal. The administration feels it would be advantageous to advertise for bid at this time, so that we can explore our options for these services with other bids that are received. We have used E S S for the last four years. So we used our contract term, and then we opted for the yearly renewals. We're asking for permission to advertise without substitute staffing services. And this will run July one of twenty-two, so we would finish with E S S for this year and enter into a new contract with whether E S S were in profit for a three-year term through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five.
Or I believe we approve the permission to advertise substitute staffing services. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any comments or questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Alright, voluntary short-term disability, voluntary term life insurance, Ms. Galbaker?
One America has notified us that our rates for long-term disability and group basic term life insurance would be increasing due to an increase in our claims. These two types of coverage, the long-term disability and our group basic life, are benefits that Greater Clark provides to our employees, except for the dollars that our employees do have to pay for the group basic life. So these increases that One America, who would have to pay to One America, would be borne completely as a dollar by Greater Clark. One America has agreed, however, to a rate hold on those two Greater Clark provided benefits if we were to switch our short-term disability and term life insurance, both of which are voluntary to our employees, over to One America. Currently, American Fidelity provides those two volunteer, voluntary benefits. One America has requested that we offer an open enrollment basis for the two thousand twenty-two school year, and so they will be providing appointments and meetings at the buildings to provide information. As far as the short-term disability is concerned, moving to One America, we will be able to cut the cost to our employees by half, or the state coverage. Or they can continue to keep their costs the same, and their benefits will increase. With voluntary term life, our employees have the option to stay with their fidelity and pay those premiums or like pay instead of pay, payroll deduction. Or they can move over to One America. And any new employees will need to, or sign to One America next year, once they contribute to Greater Clark for their voluntary term life. In J Group is our insurance consultant, and they're recommending that we make these changes, because it's also been discussed with our insurance committee.
Or do I have a motion regarding the short-term disability voluntary term life insurance? Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments? Seems easy, but not quite. All those in favor of this decision signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Staying. Thank you very much. Who is that? Sorry, did you introduce yourself? Facility usage fees, thank you.
Hey, Mr. President. Now, I'm presenting to the board under this item, these two items. Attachments of update fees for facility rental of district facilities in areas that are subject to rental or pre-plots. These fees have not been updated since July of twenty eighteen. And the district needs to update to accommodate increase in service prices such as staff, energy, and supplies for cleaning and maintenance additionally. I've included an updated facility usage form to be effective January one, two thousand twenty-two. So both these and the form, anybody that completes one from that point forward will be assessed with these fees. The administrative team and George, are you how, evaluated that form? So I am submitting to the board recommendations to approve the board and fees beginning January one, two thousand twenty-two.
Or I move that we approve post-updated facility fees and rental form. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any comments? All those in big signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Alright, next would be contract for in-house facility management team to perform H B A C work.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we've done in five-year plan, and inside of, I showed you that the two thousand twenty-one bond funds have come in, all of that, four million dollars was devoted to some update repairs and H B A C that can be done by our in-house facility management team. Reminding the board that going to this level was not only a necessary item that had to be done for cost reduction plan, but you will need, by that agreement, you're saving thirty percent on work because they are in-house team that has that we're performing. So attach to the contract for the H B A C work that is outlined in the facility plan that will be supported in the two thousand twenty-one bond as approved. I have attached the contract outlines each, that outlines each school along with the summary schematic that indicates the amounts and description of work to be performed. As approved in the plan and the bond resolutions, the amount meant to H B A C repairs was four million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As a reminder, the facility says reflect the need, the need in the district, why of H B A C repairs and replacement, renovation of this type, was estimated on thirty-five million dollars, of which we have committed thus far eight million dollars in S R funds in S R three to offset the cost of these repairs towards these overall needs. Mind you, that three by nine would include those four of those, correct, Tony? This contract will cover the scope of work for Utica Elementary, Charlestown Middle School, River Valley Middle... River Valley Middle School, New Washington Middle High, Parkview Middle School, and the administration building. I recommend that the board trustees approve the contract between GCCS and profession for the updated updates and repairs, including paving, which is part of guaranteed savings, in the amount of $4 million 450,000 dollars. Is my recommendation forward to that contract this evening.
Board, I move that we approve the in-house perfections to perform our HVAC work. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And, and, Mr. Freeman? Any questions or comments? I just...
Real quick.
Sure.
So this 4.4 million is on top of the 8 for that, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, so, so of the 45 million, we're going to be reducing the, by 8 million with the answer, by 4.4 by, and just a small portion out of the paving. As remember, in this connect, they had those octadons that said 35 million for HVAC. So much for paving, that's the end of the district, so much for plumbing. And in January, they'll continue explaining the needs over those octadons. So this will start reducing what definitely outlined there. Now, a 35 million number, as you start cutting into that app, that, that need by the 8 million 4.4, remember, when, if we, once we get to the new schools being built, that will also reduce that because we're not going to replace that if those four schools not necessary. Only emergency repairs, which we're trying to give those minor things, whatever we can do to get them through. Makes sense?
If you're remembering the presentation, just for HVAC, you know, we have $45 million for the repairs to do this district for paving, now they could try to add $5 million, you know, and, and so we're trying to take chunks out of that and do as much as we can each year as we go through the five-year facility plans.
I'm, I'm really happy to be able to do this, not only have we saved the money, but they're doing a really tremendous job, so that's, that's huge to us. So, board, all those in favor of using perfections to perform our HVAC work in-house, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Staying. All right. The next would be Duke Energy Reduced Energy Rate Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please review and approve the attached agreement between GCCS and Duke Energy for the period of June 1, 2022 through May 31, 2023. Duke Energy offers reduced energy rates in exchange that the district will be able to curb energy usage during peak load time range that occurred about the year. Those who should, you should type frames, the district is notified by Duke, and the district will be prepared to reduce energy usage. To curb the load, this reduction only occurs during emergency situations, and has only occurred approximately five times and never more than a maximum 10 times per year, and has occurred always when buildings are not occupied by students. So you're saying in the summertime. Thus, no significant delay in operations, emergencies, emergency energy power standing situations that have occurred do so between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m., hours on top of that. So not only at those times in the summer, it's usually in the evening, probably the peak air conditioning time, usage around the year. In order to reduce costs, we have a reduced energy rate. I recommend that the district approve power share agreement between Duke Energy and Greater Clark County Schools. Do you provide services to all buildings except the administration building, you'd advantage Charlestown? No. I have to say that we must get this pretty intensely because we must not up north have this kind of thing because I've never had to, I never had the opportunity to get a reduced rate because we have to turn off our air conditioner because we probably are going to turn it on. So, I'm saying, and I really did ask this, really how, what impact it is with kids, you know, our teachers, our staff, and, you know, it rarely happens, but over the course of the years, maybe one time it happened like more than five times. So I, I had that, you know, history lesson rocks me on that, that particular something.
All right. Board, do I have a motion to approve the Duke Energy Energy Rate Agreement for Power Share Program?
President, I approve that we approve the Duke Energy Reduced Energy Rate Agreement. Power share program.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Any questions, Ms. Huber? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Staying. All right, the next would be the bus contracts add mileage addendums.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we, we have discovered the great increase in the required long by transportation for McKenna students in addition to our foster and special education. So our contract drivers were still trying to go ahead and add, you know, their costs to go ahead and put those students for us, and that did show a mileage increase in their contracts. So they provide that information and our transportation team verifies those miles, and we commit to paying the mileage rate for their contract. I know that earlier submitted, what actually happened was that bus drivers were adding those numbers, so we were writing that in and out, realizing that we needed to put the original contract on it. So before, before I presented today, I got the contract number in there. So you'll notice there was just a couple of changes in the mileage, but that and about. And because our transportation drivers are so good and they're really doing a lot, you know, because we have a depression which everywhere, including our bus drivers, that these contractors have stepped up yesterday. I received another request, so I added that to your memo to include that contract as well. You have to get ready to that, so I'm sure that you didn't, whether services that they provide for us, and, you know, for us to fulfill that, that required laws to provide a transportation. So if our recommendation board approves the amended agreements.
Thank you.
Well, just to add some, one more detail, I have to give you orders of direct transportation. The reason we're doing this is for Route 21C or Bus 21C, the shuttle route from Charlestown Jeff, it increased ridership and added neighborhood, added a neighborhood off Stacy Road due to overcrowding. And in 4C, added mileage because it added a neighborhood off Salem Noble Road to that route. 4W increased ridership due to many students coming back from relearning. Just had a lot of students coming back to relearning. 2W, same thing, increased ridership because of students coming back to relearning. And in 18C, that, that bus transports a student through McKinney Vento from down in our area, Jeff, Charlestown area, all the way up to Scottsburg and back each day, you know, as part of the homeless McKinney Vento law, you know, so we want to make sure they're compensated. But just wanted to give you a little more detail on, you know, why we're attending those.
Okay. Board, do I have a motion for the approval of the contract that bus driver addendums is presented? Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions or comments?
It, it basically deals with home students. You know, they, let's say, let's say they're from the house fire in Jeffersonville, and now the student has to be displaced to Scottsburg. We're, we're still required by the McKinney Vento app to transport that student to their home school where they've been going, so that if they don't have a disruption in, you know, school services and the transfer to a different school or something like that.
A lot of times there are particular situations too where students are moved from home by, um, jobs.
Foster, you know, they go to foster care. We, we, we transport students, uh, Scottsburg, we record them, New Albany, Sellersburg, and a little bit everywhere around, around Southern Dune here.
And, and, you know, that's a changing, that's always a moving target because that can happen at any given time. So we've met with Daniel about how can we, you know, reduce this, or maybe be a little bit more efficient as these things occur. So we are looking at pricing at smaller buses that may hit some of those outer areas instead of putting the pressure on, you know, creating, you know, there, you know, because there's a lot of time in that as well, as you can imagine. So if their contractor is responsible right now, we can accidentally introduce this to a certain point and then continue on. So we're assessing all of that to see what would work for us. We do have situations where maybe the student, maybe it's only one student, we don't have a bus going that way. That does save our costs, otherwise we would be sitting like our city officers can give agreements over that for transporting them. So any person that will make in our vehicles have that consideration in that, in that process.
Board, all those in favor of the approval of the contract that bus drivers addendums is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying. Okie doke. Permission to advertise the RFP for the CMC services for one-year projects.
All right, so now we have to shift gears. We're all in the mindset of the year 22, the two elementaries, so let's go back to the projects that are getting the, the classrooms, all of the bathrooms that we're, that we're going to do throughout the district and, and all of that, which you already approved. So the architect and superintendent have met with principals that it does affect to have those conversations about what's going to, what the building's going to look like, what the needs are, where those programs are going to be, and they have come up with the elementary design in order for us to seek out a construction management manager as a contractor to provide these services. So for us to solicit the best of the best, we do have to advertise for that. So this is part of, this is year one of our five-year plan that we're looking into, and I'm requesting that, let me say these are the schools that, that this would apply to. Riverside Elementary, North End Elementary, River Valley Middle School, Charlestown Middle School, the Washington Middle High School, and Jack Park. And I am requesting permission to advertise and obtain and solicit proposals for construction managers, the contractor, or the above projects. The bids will be to enter our office honor before January 7th, and the evaluation committee will review and interview proposals in corporations that submit. All questions from providers must go through the architect, which is Mr. Jamie Lake. This election and recommendation will be submitted to the board of trustees and the January 25th, 2022 regular board meeting. Please note, request for permission to advertise is of those portions only of year one will qualify, as I stated above. Other work outlined in year one will not require CMC services. So we, if you recall, some of the semblance replacing the floor, uh, New Washington gyms, like 2000, we've done that, we have that, had experience with that. We physically don't do that, we're an experienced post company. That's not going to qualify, or it's, it's not going to qualify. I respectfully request permission to advertise the CMC services as a person.
Do I have a motion, board, for the approval?
President, I approve that you give permission to advertise CMC for your one construction project.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Do I have a second? Second. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Any questions or concerns?
I can kind of just say about CMC, the beauty of the CMC because you go back to the delivery method and obtain that construction project to be very similar to use the design bill. Design bill gives you a project to stay within the parameter, but the CMC gives you flexibility where you don't have to use their design. Because us, the opportunity have to say so, but we stay likely right in the budget. And because what we have to do to make sure that we stay within our balance and still take care of our buildings, that is a very attractive deliverer, not that, that we are highly interested in as administrative team, certainly from our financial perspective, to continue to provide and serve these schools and still maintain within our budget.
Board, all those in favor of the approval, permission to advertise CMC contract for your construction and renovation projects, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
Thank you, I think I put it, you get angry, I'm surprised.
No, we're real bad. Next item would be the request to publish a request of RFP for wireless network equipment purchase. Ms. Bower?
Good evening, board. Tonight, I'm here to request the permission to publish a request for proposal for wireless network equipment. This is part of an ongoing project to upgrade our wireless connectivity in all of our buildings. Over the last two years, we've completed wireless connectivity upgrades in our elementary school, and we're now ready to complete those upgrades in our secondary building. The use of a request for proposals via U rate 470 will allow us to solicit bids from qualified vendors and identify which vendor might be best qualified to complete the project. The project will include access points and networks, which is necessary to meet the needs of our digital classes.
Board, do I have an approval for the request to publish a request for RFP for wireless network equipment? Mr. President, I approve the approval of the request. Publish a request for proposals for wireless network equipment purchase. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any questions or concerns? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Thank you, Ms. Bauer. Uh, next would be more comments, superintendent comments. Ms. Hudson?
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and have a holiday, Happy New Year. Do you want to, or me?
We're not telling you yet.
December, the 25th will be here at 8 o'clock.
Hey, I P D S for that. I'm like, yeah, all right, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Paul?
Uh, yes, in addition to wishing everybody Merry Christmas and all, Happy New Year, I just want to thank those who came out to public hearing to speak, to be gratifying to hear the positive feedback while the round work played by the administration and the board. Our children and our teachers deserve the best. We're going to give you a second.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to be a little free with this one.
Cool.
Uh, this is going to be the last meeting of, you know, mine and Kevin's first year on the board, first year of public service. It's very rocky because, you know, we've had a pandemic and, you know, other outside factors, but I've enjoyed it a minute, and I'm so thankful for the service in our community, to the students and teachers at Great Park.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
I want to move my spot, and I have to go after him every time. No, I just really want to thank people for coming out and speaking because it's nice to know that we have support. I was hoping we'd have support for these new schools that we really desperately need when you look at the, you know, the condition of some of our buildings. And I'm really excited that we hope to go forward with this, and thanks to everybody for their hard work. One of the things I've learned on the board is, uh, when you're, when you're on the board, you learn what these administrators and this cabinet does. It, it's just, it, they work tirelessly, you know. A kid sometimes, Dr. Hartley, she doesn't sleep. I swear she doesn't sleep. But they work tirelessly, and they're just constantly working and, and meeting and, um, you know, they have some great ideas, um, they work together very well. And another thing that I'm very happy about is that on our board, we seem to work well together. We seem to, it's been really nice to work with people who kind of have the same goal and the same philosophy, and we're, we're kind of focused on our goals. Whether we like each other for real or not, it really doesn't matter.
I know, for real.
I know. But, I mean, I, I think that, that, you know, there can be times when we don't agree, but, you know, we're able to get past that, and, and I, I think that's one of the reasons we've been able to get a lot of things done during a really difficult time in our world. So, uh, thanks for all your work.
Ms. Perkins?
The holidays can, all the times, even though they're exciting, they can also be times that are hard for people and families. And I just wanted to remind all of us to reach out to your neighbors and your friends and your family members that may be around in this area and check on them and give them a little help.
You know, I can't really say, I echo whatever else is said. I'm grateful, I appreciate the teachers, I know this is a well, it's great for them. Um, they do understand, um, that they've got to come back, right? So there's that. But I, to everyone sitting up here, I, I know for a fact that everyone sitting up here has given money, their own pockets, has gone, visited somebody, reached out to somebody, done things beyond outside of this service on the board. I know that for a fact. I, I can't thank Mr. Paul, Mr. Freeman enough for giving us a year of your life, you know, I mean, it is, it's, it's a really big thing. Um, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I, it's, it would be hard to surpass in kindness, I just, it blows my mind, you know, when you think she's just the nicest person in the world, she turns around and does something else for you, you go, oh, I'm sorry, I'll catch my eye.
Oh, I thought you had your life again. She turned around and stabbed you with it.
Yeah. But, but Ms. Perkins is the same way, I mean, that what she just said about reaching out to people, you know, who's gonna go there, you know, but you, um, I'm the black sheep all the time, really don't care about anybody else but myself. No, I, I love the fact that we do care about each other and, and, and to that point, you know, this team up here that's worked to get to this point, this crescendo of what we're doing with other people's money, I think has been huge. And it's, it's helping kids, I know all be in the ground or somewhere, probably scattered somewhere else, but I just, I'm, I'm grateful that I can be a part of this and this team. So, you know, Mr. Lawford, I know you've gotten blasted, you know, just a bunch, I mean, when you went to those community things, I want to say, man, just put a bull's eye on it, you know, and you, you did all those things so you could be, and I know we don't use the transfer work, but that's what you did, I mean, you went out and did that knowing full well that people were gonna flip over multiple decisions about cost reduction, you know, and then you did it anyway. So, I mean, I, I, I just am grateful, and I know we've heard too much and everybody goes hurry up, you know, win, but I, I just need to be said, you know, the, the cabinet, I don't know, you know, you couldn't order a better cabinet, you couldn't, you couldn't go handpicked throughout the state of better cabinet, and, and not just in their position, but their kindness. Ms. Markowski, you know what? We'd be dead if you ordered. I mean, and nobody knows that. All these documents here that are here for, could be signed, she put all this business together, and here you go. And it, and it's correct, if I did that, it would just probably be blank. Anyway, I just, I want to say thank you all for all coming out and doing this and listening to me ramble on, but it's, it's a real deal up here, we're taking it seriously, and thank you for being here and taking it seriously as well. Mr. Lawford?
Well, and I appreciate those comments. I want to say too, that, you know, the board, the cabinet, a great group of people to work with, I mean, I think everybody has the same intention sitting up here and also the cabinet is, we want to leave this district better than what we found, you know, and that's the overall goal, and do right by the taxpayers and the community, you know, and that's why we spent the time putting these plans together to make sure we do that, you know, that we, we want to be, um, walking in hand, life step with the community, uh, make sure they support what we're doing, make sure that, uh, we're, we're doing the right things so that, you know, twenty years from now, you know, we're, this district, this community's in a great place, ten years from now, whatever that may be. Uh, and I think we have a lot of momentum headed in that direction. Yes, there's had to be, we've had to make some tough decisions, you know, um, that I still feel strongly had to be made, you know, and, uh, I'm glad we did make them because it allowed us to do some things for our classified staff and teachers in terms of pay, um, to, to make sure that they were rewarded. So, uh, I'm very thrilled, um, excited about what we're doing, even though it's not always easy. Uh, sometimes it's a battle, but, you know, some, some battles are worth fighting, you know, and I think you have a board up here and a cabinet, um, administrators that are, that are, that are willing to fight those battles and, and get things done for this district and do, do right by the community, uh, and also take care of our students and staff, you know, and so, uh, with that being said, there are a couple of things I just wanted to make sure, to reiterate once again before we leave, uh, tonight. Um, you know, one question we didn't really answer, and I had a couple of you asking, well, you know, why are you doing the hearings now if you're not going to sell the bonds till probably November of next year? Well, typically it takes six to eight months to do plan and design, you know, a new elementary school, you know, so we wanted to do this now so that we have plenty of time to plan, design, come up with a cost before we go to sell the bonds. Obviously, you know, what Matt said from Steeple, you know, we're not going to surpass thirty-two million dollars for a retail elementary school, you know, so we want to have time to make sure we can plan these out right, you know, make sure we have everything in them that we want and not rush. And so that's, that's why we did it now, you know, that's the reason. The other thing I just want to go back to, you know, what I think as, as, you know, a district, we've been very good stewards of the finances, the taxpayer's money, you know, the board sitting up here, the cabinet, you know, and we want to continue that, you know, and that's why I can't say it enough that we're committed to keeping that tax rate at a dollar ten. We don't want to negatively impact anyone in terms of property taxes and the tax rate. Uh, Steeple has done great work with us and has, has told us over and over again because of our assessed value drill, we can do this. We can do everything in our five-year facility plan, um, and not impact the tax rate negatively. It'll, you know, we can keep it at a dollar ten. You know, so my question to anybody in this community is, why wouldn't you want to do that? Why wouldn't you want to do that for the staff that's sitting in this room and the students that were sitting in this room earlier? Why would we not want to do that? Why would we not want to invest in our community and our kids? So, you know, it's been a lot of hard work, uh, but every second is worth it if, if we get to that point where we're doing great things for our kids, you know. And lastly, you know, I just want to make sure people aren't confused about what's going on with Bridge Point tonight, okay? We, we actually closed Bridge Point for students last year. Those students were dispersed or moved to Franklin Square, uh, North Haven, and Riverside, you know, so that was done, those students are there. This is a procedural process that we have to follow through based on state code in order to do something with that building, whether it's sell it, demolish it, or whatever. So I don't want people to be confused, you know, you know how sometimes the media is or people on social media, uh, they get confused about, oh, you're closing Bridge Point, we thought you already did that. Yes, the students are already at different schools, this is just a procedural process we have to go through so that we can sell the building, um, you know, and, and go through that after we go through this for, you know, the next thirty, forty days. So, uh, I just want to thank everybody and, and I want to wish happy holiday break to our staff, both classified and certified, and all board and cabinet, and enjoy the two weeks off.
Ms. Markowski? Oh, you, oh, you lost your voice. Okay, okay, go on. Um, well, uh, last thing I would say is thank you, Jeffville Police Officers, for always being here and looking back to me, it really means a lot, trust me. It's a good feeling, it has been a rough year, you all really had to do a lot, so thank you very much. Uh, board, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
I second.
I don't know, oh, I thought you said, I say what?
I, I second.
Aye.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we're done.